Welcome to the regular meeting of council for June 27th. I'm going to call the meeting to order. You have before you a copy of tonight's agenda. We are removing item 10 as there is no in camera. So looking for a motion to adopt the agenda as amended. Counselor Wall, seconded by Counselor Chambers. Any questions to the motion? All in favor? Got a bit of a delay. Perfect, thank you. Item number three, Karen seems to be frozen. Item number three, oh, there she is. We're good. Any declarations of interest tonight? None noted. We'll move on to item number four, announcements, awards, ceremonies, and presentations. Um, I have a couple. I wanted to remind everybody that Canada Day is this Saturday, and there's a whole bunch of stuff going on. Jill has partnered with Soaring Eagle, Maiti, KFN, all our indigenous partners, and they are throwing a big party for Canada. So I wanted to remind counselors that we can use some help at 11 or anytime, actually. She's starting at eight decorating, and anytime if you guys can show up, it would be good to flip burgers and have some help down at the Wharf. Um, and I wanted to take the opportunity to congratulate all our graduates. I had the opportunity to speak at DJ, and I know Counselor Wall spoke for at a Corporal Real, so congratulating all the class of 2023 and all our graduates. Anything further from council? Go ahead, Counselor Dufort.
Thank you, worship. Speaking of collaborations, I just wanted to send out a big thank you to all of those who joined in on the celebration of Indigenous People's State. We also had Kat Ludeeche and the West Point First Nations, the Maiti Association, Soaring Eagle, and the Town of Hay River, and it was a wonderful affair. Everybody pitched in, and it was just really nice, lots of great compliments on it. I want to especially thank Glenn and the Recreation Department, I mean SAO Smiths, for the great setup they had for the kids that went to that play area.
Thanks. Um, anything from administration? SAO Smith?
Uh, nothing from us, your worship.
Okay, moving on to administrative inquiry. He's going to pass it back to SAO Smith.
There's no, um, audio.
It working?
We can hear you, Counselor Groenwegen.
It work?
Uh, I'm muting him. Okay, uh, good evening, council. Beautiful day outside, short meeting today, but thanks for joining. Some of our senior administration is off on vacation leave right now and, and some others have to leave. So myself and Patrick and Stacy are here on the call. Just a few things, though, coming from other departments. I'll start with the Department of Finance. Um, we have received a few land appraisals for, for lots that administration will be bringing forward to council at a later date with a recommendation for disposal. So this includes an industrial lot on Dean Drive and the old Carter's float-based property. A tax auction is scheduled for July 12th at 9:00 AM at Town Hall. Currently, I see about just over 20 properties on the listing and will likely or typically see that number come down to probably about half of that by the auction date. Um, we, we have been preparing our proposed amendment to the seniors and for seniors and disabilities tax relief bylaws for review by our bylaw and policy committee. That's going to come to their next meeting in July. And this has been discussed at some level with through the Finance Committee, so we'll be bringing forward, just kind of looking forward or looking for some direction on prioritization and, uh, on our engagement plan for that. Uh, preparing a claim to MACA for cost coverages associated with response to the KFN area wildfire event. And we do have a meeting this week scheduled with RBC to discuss terms of our long-term debenture agreement. Those in the Finance Committee will remember, we've seen some variances there through the, through the Q1 reporting. We're going to discuss that to see how interest rates may or may not be affecting our O&amp;M, our O&amp;M budget. Uh, maybe I'll just pause and see if there's any questions related to finance in a minute.
Any questions from council?
Okay, you're none.
No, I didn't hear any. Jeff, can you turn on your camera so I can see? It should be a little camera icon. Go ahead, Glenn.
Okay. Uh, a few things for, a few things for Protective Services. So they, the department is preparing the loitering bylaw proposal for the bylaw and policy committee review at that, at that next, next meeting that I referenced. Um, some direction provided there from the Social Issues Committee. Uh, we're scheduling, still trying to schedule a debrief and, and find enough time to put together a debrief on the wildfire event response. And just wanted to note that we are seeing a reduction in available responders as we move into the summer, a little tighter for getting the volunteer and on-call responders that assist, of course, with providing emergency and other medical response needs. So it is putting some increased stress on our, on our paid staff. Any questions related to Protective Services?
Any questions from council? Go ahead.
Okay, with Public Works, um, obviously a busy time of year for us for construction. So our town hall abatement work is kicking, kicking off this week with contractor orientation and set up securing of the site. So that's, should you start to see some activity there, hopefully later this week, public communication will be issued advising residents of the, the work and, and if there's any hazards in the area. Fraser Place work has been ongoing for the last couple of weeks now. Uh, earthwork type work on the, on the road systems there. Uh, that should be completed here shortly in the next couple of weeks. And then we'll move into installation of shallow utilities later in the summer. Uh, our annual inspection of our water and waste systems with the, or not education, um, environment and climate change, I think, formerly E and R, occurring this week. So I've got a meeting with them and they'll be going around touring our facilities with our Public Works staff, and they report back on any risks or issues that need to be addressed. Uh, the community cleanup, the community curbside cleanup is complete, and any outstanding items at curbs that you might see around town had issues with no payments, fluids not being drained, um, things that were not accepted. So we'll send some communication out and otherwise Protective Services specialists will correspond with property owners directly if required. And trying to get some traction on painting our crosswalks and sidewalks. We started some of that work last week, but expect to be out there this week with good weather pending any thunderstorms, but keeping an eye on, on the weather for that. Uh, also key activity, we have our Public Works supervisor starting this week. I think he arrives and starts on Thursday, so we'll be doing some orientation and getting him underway to complete activities tied to the busy maintenance schedule this summer. And a lot of ongoing work right now on River View Drive and Beaver Crescent. I could see crews are actually out there still right now, working on landscaping activities and other deficiencies from last year. Um, any questions related to Public Works activities?
Any questions from council? None noted. Back to SAO Smith.
Okay, and a much shorter update on recreation than typically with our Director of Recreation away. But I note that our welcome sign, the Welcome to Hay River sign has arrived, and, um, they're starting to do the physical installation of it. Uh, there will be some work on electrical systems and landscaping throughout the summer on that. We have to decommission the old sign as well, which is, I've had discussions with the Heritage Society and the museum in, in adopting that sign. Um, so yeah, well, we've sent out some public communication on that today as, as well. So people, people want to be aware of, um, work in the area. And also Recreation is supporting the, the big celebration that the mayor mentioned around Canada Day. Uh, so a lot of setup activities ahead of and during the weekend. And that's it for Recreation. If there's any questions on it?
Uh, just a quick question. I love the idea that we contacted the Heritage Society about the old sign. Um, I did notice that we covered up the, the old port landing sign, the old wooden ones behind it, the metal piece. Would they be interested in that as well? I'm sure we could attach the metal to a piece of plywood if we had to, but it would be a shame to see that rot away there, I guess. Just to, just something, I noticed it when I was out there, so I thought maybe I'll mention that.
Sorry, the port landing signing, signs where? At Port Landing?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, it'll require a bit more information.
Yeah, it's attached, the new one's attached to the old one, so they would be, because I know that there's quite a history with Bobby Port. So I thought if they're interested, maybe we could work with them as well on that one.
Okay. Okay, if there's no more questions.
I don't think. Any questions from council for Recreation? None noted. Back to SAO Smith.
Okay, we'll go next to the ASAO for his update before I conclude with my own.
Great, thank you. And I appreciate the plug, Mayor Jameson, about Canada Day. The, um, just a reminder as well, the, um, those who want to be in the parade, please submit your application forms. I know some people are leaving them to the end, but really helps Jill as far as planning goes. Um, she's obviously been working very hard and connecting with, you know, all the different groups to, to bring this together, so well done. Uh, myself, I'm working on the Rural Transportation Fund grant for two 24-seat buses. I've mentioned this before. The funding is 100% coverage that, due to the fact we're in the territories. Uh, this is based on some needs that we have in the community that currently aren't served by the private sector. So as an example, obviously they'd be of great help during emergency situations, but, uh, they could also be used with seniors' transportation, uh, wheelchair clients, recreation programming, and school trips. And, um, so the, the actual grant application is on the capital side, basically, to get the, the assets. And then, uh, there's some work to be done in terms of the operations and, and how that would work. So hoping to bring that to the next council meeting or two. Uh, also working on a CMHC Housing Accelerator Fund, Fund Grant Project. Uh, project provides a base $40,000 per unit created over what would be our normal, um, growth rate. Uh, and we have some, uh, some math to, to figure that out over the last five years. There's also additional funds for affordable housing as well as green initiatives. Uh, the new housing coordinator that was primarily working on the options and will probably take over most of this work. Um, some of the, um, initial ideas that, that she's working through are using the money to buy derelict properties, properties for as little as a dollar and demolish any buildings and returns a lot to a sellable state for future building. Uh, there'd obviously be a focus on multifamily homes where it makes sense on those lots. Uh, also provide, uh, use the money to provide incentive to those that would like to add additional, uh, homes, like a garden home or a legal suite. And, um, and then, of course, some of the other ones are investigating a seniors' building or, uh, what we can do, uh, in the proposed subdivisions. The horizon on that grant is over the next three years. So, uh, and the measurement is in building permits. So we have to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, whatever we commit to, uh, we're going to need to see some action in terms of, uh, you know, if it's feasible to do in that timeframe. Um, also working on the DMAF grant for Airport Road. Uh, we received funding from engineering consulting firm to draft a design cost and schedule for elevating portions of Airport Road that were breached during the last flood event and impacted the Cranberry and, and adjacent subdivisions. I'm sure we, we all know about that. The, the deadline for that is July 19th. Uh, there's a number of areas that require collecting, uh, supporting documentation. So we've sent out a request for letters of support. We've connected with the GNWT and, uh, the initial report from the consultant is going to be here on July 9th, and that will trigger, uh, you know, the rest of the work. Aside from that, uh, it's been busy on the communications side. Um, we've been pushing hard on the Hay River Tourism, uh, side as well. Uh, seems to be creating some results. The, uh, a post, for example, that we put up on Fridays, uh, about the beach and Great Slave Lakes received 3,700 views and 171 reactions. So that's kind of what we're trying to do is, is get that information out and, uh, you know, make it attractive. And there, you know, there's lots, lots to see. And, uh, so that's an easy task, but we, you know, we have to put the work in. So aside from that, just normal work, and that's, that's what I've got for now.
Thank you. Any questions for Assistant SAO? Go ahead, Counselor Willows.
Okay, first time using this format, so first, can you hear me?
Yes.
We can.
Okay, thank you. Uh, a question for the SAO through the mayor. The first item you talked about, a grant available for some vehicles that may be of use to the community sounds very interesting, and I understand there's more information coming, but who's that grant through?
Uh,
Yeah, that, that grant is through, uh, the Rural Transportation Fund. It's a federal fund. I can send out the link. I believe that's the, uh, the name for it.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions from council? Do you have your hand up, Glenn?
I do. Thank you, worship. I just wanted to, to add to that in case it wasn't clear that, um, yeah, major funding opportunity, and we've had a lot of transportation issues through recent emergencies especially, but, um, ongoing for the community in different areas, some directly tied to municipal areas, others to different departments and, and, or different government agencies and such. But yeah, so the intent is there is just to investigate it. We'd hate to miss the opportunity in talking to some stakeholders, not identified in our capital plan, um, for purchasing of, of transportation vehicles, but, uh, we thought it would be prudent to bring forward something to council for, um, review at committee and discussion on if you'd like to proceed. So yeah, just a bit of work right now by our ASAO ahead of bringing more information to council for a more informed decision.
Thank you. Anything further? Counselor Dufort, go ahead.
Thank you, worship. I just wanted to say again to the Office of the ASAO that, um, really a great job on communications. I am on Facebook more hours than I can admit, and, uh, I get my notifications from the town, and they're, they're very good. It's a really good, uh, just keep up the good work there.
Well, appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, back to SAO Smith.
Uh, thanks, your worship. I'll run through a few things. Um, so the wildfire emergency, still some activity there in our organization. Uh, for me, we still have a few recognition, um, letters that we want to get out on behalf of councils to those that supported the evacuation. Uh, hopefully can wrap those up this week before we get too far away from it. Uh, but we have sent out, there's been communication, a general thank you ad that has gone out to the, through the Hub Newspaper and shared through our, our electronic communication channels and, uh, recognition to staff and, and other, um, governments as well. Uh, still trying to proceed with the long-term care MOU. So I did meet with the GNWT to discuss the terms surrounding the contribution agreement and land purchase portions of it, uh, with the planned hopeful development in Sun Dog. Uh, so right now they're sitting with legal counsel. It's very time sensitive. Uh, I was hoping that we might have something for council to discuss today, but, uh, nothing further yet, but do hope that we can finalize this week with the, uh, general indication of council on, on, um, interest and direction to move forward with it. Uh, our, the GNWT's Harbor Restoration Project, just to note that we are finalizing some short-term land lease agreements on a few parcels of town land for storage of dredging, uh, of, of the dredging byproduct, and, uh, they also have several sites, uh, GNWT sites that will be used for the storage of that material. Uh, we've issued development permits now to, to permit that at those designated sites. And yeah, we're all hopeful that that project can, um, proceed this summer for the benefit of, um, multiple reasons, primarily right now, the, the marine transportation. Uh, I mentioned earlier in a couple of updates around the bylaw committee meeting. So we currently have that scheduled for July 6th. I think it's an evening meeting. Um, we might have to look at rescheduling to the following week, but as it stands right now, uh, July 6th, so we're working on a couple of bylaws that were mentioned earlier, uh, but also recommendations to the bylaw prioritization schedule that, uh, that committee oversees. Um, happy to announce that our Housing Development Coordinator started this past Friday. Uh, Cynthia White, who, uh, who you may know, who most recently held the position of SAO in Fort Smith, joins our team through the, uh, currently a one-year term position, which is on her list of activities to try to find funding to support multiple years. Um, but yeah, really excited to have Cynthia on board to coordinate the execution of the town's, uh, community housing plan while also supporting the social issues committees, development of their interagency community plan. Um, she is right into the thick of things now, as the ASAO mentioned. She's supporting, focusing on supporting a town applications through CHMC's, um, Housing Accelerator Fund. We did have a meeting with, uh, that department last week, and yeah, quite optimistic about opportunities through that fund. And, uh, as the ASAO mentioned, more information to follow as, um, as council will be key to making a decision on direction that we, we ultimately want to take there. Uh, she'll also be soon setting up the Housing Committee. So a Housing Committee was identified in our housing, uh, community housing plan, and that will bring multiple stakeholders, including NWT Housing, um, local development companies, seniors, et cetera, to the table towards, um, towards implementing the, uh, the plan that involves multiple agencies. Uh, so yeah, I'm busy this week or have been this week trying to onboard and bring Cynthia up to speed on our housing and social issue needs, and we'll be setting up lots of meetings and making introductions with key stakeholders over the coming weeks. An update from the Development Appeal Board. So a decision has been received by the Development Appeal Board with respect to the appeal submitted by Masqua Engineering on their installation of two skid-mounted trailer structures. So a stop work order had been issued previously, um, by the town at Masqua, given the structures, the structures were deemed to not be in, um, compliance with the town zoning and building bylaws. So the Development Appeal Board has ruled in favor of the town and given Masqua 30 days to become compliant, uh, through the removal of the trailers and the ancillary equipment. Uh, so that's something we will be, um, keeping an eye on through our, through our high law enforcement. Um, yeah, I think that's, that's it for me unless there's any questions.
Any questions for our SAO? Nothing noted. We'll move on to item number six. Thank you. So item number six, looking for a motion to adopt the regular meeting minutes of council for June 13th. Counselor Wall, go ahead. You're on mute. Oh, there you go. We can't hear you, Counselor Wall. I don't know what's going on. Hang on a sec. Brian, try and talk.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Do you want to try again, Karen? You're on mute now. Yeah, I don't know what's going on. You're kind of, your connection's a little spotty sometimes. You keep freezing. I'll go with Counselor Chambers. Go ahead.
Uh, yep, I move that, uh, the Council of the Town of Hay River approves the regular meeting minutes from June 13th, 2023 as presented.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Wall. Any, any questions to the motion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Item number seven is new business. 7A is the Recreation Monthly Report for May. Looking for a motion? Counselor Chambers, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. I'll move the recommendation that the Council of the Town of Hay River accepts the report entitled Recreation and Community Services Monthly Report for May 2023 as presented.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Dufort. Any questions to the motion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Item 7B is a letter of support. Counselor Dufort? Oh, Counselor Willows, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, quick question, just before we carry on. Are we, uh, using this format supposed to have the minutes in front of us or not? Or the agenda, I should say? The agenda?
Oh, yeah, I, Stacy, can you put the agenda up?
I have been sharing my screen. Have you not seen it?
No.
I can't see it.
I can't either.
Let me, let me try sharing it myself. How's that?
Um, something's coming.
Yep, we got it. I got it now.
Okay.
Okay, if you could expand it so I could see it, though. There we go. Thanks.
Does everybody else have it? You have it?
I have it.
Oh, there we go. Okay. Okay, so looking for a motion. Counselor Dufort, go ahead.
Thank you, worship. I'll move that the Council of the Town of Hay River directs administration to draft a letter supporting the Cable Tennis Norris application to the GNWT for a grant funding.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Wall. Any questions to the motion? Go ahead, Counselor Willows.
Is that for Counselor Willows?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I support this. I did, the question is, I noticed in the script as we go through it, it's talking about trying to enhance having, uh, events into the smaller communities. So when it says smaller communities, are we talking about Hay River?
Uh, SAO Smith, can you answer that?
Uh, thank you, worship. Yeah, so they're, they're interested in trying to host an event here in, in Hay River. So, um, down in September 21st, or September of this year, I think there's an error in the report, 21st to 24th. Um, so they, right at this point, they're just trying to get their, their ducks in a row, um, before they can commit to, to it. But this grant would help, uh, would help them secure the, the funding that is needed to, to make a, a go at it.
Okay, thanks. And just, yeah, it wasn't specific about Hay River or somewhere else. Thanks.
Yeah.
Fair enough. Any further questions? All in favor? All in favor? Perfect. Motion carries. Item number C, excused absence. Counselor Do- or Counselor Dufort, go ahead.
Thank you, worship. I'll move that the Council of the Town of Hay River excuses Counselors Boothard and Deputy Mayor Dowie from the regular meeting of council Tuesday, June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Uh, any question or seconded by? Counselor Willow's, any questions to the motion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Um, item number eight is notice of motions. There being none, we'll move on to item number nine. Looking for motion for bylaw twenty-four fifty-two amendment fees and charges bylaw. Counselor Willow's?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move bylaw number two, two, four, five, two, nine, A Amendment to Fees and Charges Bylaw.
Thank you. Seconded by? Counselor Dufort, any questions to the motion? Counselor Granaway, go ahead. Oh, you're on mute. Sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'm just wanting to know if, um, uh, administration can speak specifically to the increase, um, in fee for, uh, residential, uh, development permit. Um, I know that obviously the, this new um, schedule here is listing it as five dollars, uh, per thousand dollars of project value. Um, yeah, if we could just get, uh, I guess, um, a word on, on the increase itself, what, what, what that represents monetarily to what was previously in place.
Thank you. ASO Smith?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. There was a report that went to council prior to the, the first and second readings, um. So some of that information would be there. I could try to pull it up, but I mean, it, it did provide a comparison on the impact of, um, say, uh, I can't remember, a nineteen hundred square foot or fifteen hundred square foot, but um, some of these fees, as I, as I'll, I'll do my best to try to recall without going to that report and not having the Director of Public Works here. But I think the fees were last updated in like nineteen ninety-four, if I can recall. It's been some years since, since they were, they were increased. Um, there was some discussion on, on approach to take. Um, we used to have it under or based on, um, there was kind of a sliding scale, I guess, based on project value. We had some discussion on, on just setting it based on square footage and because sometimes when we receive applications, um, numbers can be skewed, I guess, by the applicant on, on what the development costs might look like. Um, but we did some research in, in other communities, Yellowknife, Fort Smith, High Level, um, different areas and decided to go with their approach that's consistent for, for both residential and, and the, um, commercial, uh, uh, commercial development. So, um, yeah, I, I don't have the comparisons on, on current versus proposed, I guess, but I did, the, the rates through that comparison were, um, I think we were lower than say Yellowknife, um, similar to High Level Fort Smith. But, um, yeah, I guess that's all I can speak to right now unless, um, unless you want me to pull back some additional information or answer questions later. We did leave the garages additions and renovations at, at eighty cent per square feet. And maybe while I'm just talking about the commercial or while I'm, I'm speaking the commercial, um, I think from like the development costs, as you can imagine, from twenty years ago were quite significantly uh, lower, uh, and such that our model actually I think topped out at a, a million dollars. So you had all these levels up to a million dollars. There is a million dollars and over, but I mean, most commercial developments now are, are over a million dollars, so um, it, it has an effect actually of, of making sure that we're adequately receiving, um, revenues and supporting our administrative costs for larger buildings. I think in some cases you'll actually see if you were doing a, a smaller commercial renovation, it would be, uh, it could be a lower cost than current rates, but primarily, uh, seeing, um, revenues adequately collected through larger developments, which are, are more standard now on the commercial side.
Yeah, and you, you were, you were correct, ASO Smith, in that we are still cheaper than Yellowknife and more in line with High Level and, and Fort Smith. So anything further, Counselor Granaway?
Um, no, uh, that, uh, that adequately answers my question and, and I appreciate, uh, the report that was put out for comparison purposes. Um, I know that there, I've had some discussion with constituents, uh, surrounding, um, this matter. And, uh, it, it's always just good, I think, for us to have as much dialogue, uh, within the, within the meeting for the public's, uh, for the public's sake. Um, I do appreciate that, uh, the administration has done, uh, you know, somewhat of a jurisdictional, uh, review of how other municipalities, uh, approach, um, approach these fees. And, uh, and no, I'm, I'm, I'm satisfied with that. I know that, uh, our desire here in Hay River has always been, um, uh, you know, pro-development and, uh, I, I want to see that, uh, that we kind of stick to that, um, ethos of, of being, uh, the most affordable place to to develop and, uh, and, and run a business, um, in, uh, in Northwest Territories. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm looking for, I don't, do we have a seconder? We didn't. Seconded by Counselor Dufort. Um, any further questions?
You heard a seconder.
Oh, good. Perfect. Okay. Um, any further questions? None noted. All in favor? I need more hands. Oh, I got Brian. Okay, we're good. Uh, motion carries. And finally, item number eleven. Counselor Willow's?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and a motion to adjourn.
Have a great week, guys. It's supposed to be a hot one.
Yeah, I hope everyone's enjoying their time.
Yeah, see you on Canada Day.